Good afternoon, welcome to the August 26th meeting of the Phoenix City Council. Thank you for joining us today. I will call the meeting to order and we will begin with a roll call.
Councilman DeCecio. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
We have an interpreter here with us today. Mario, would you please introduce yourself? Well, we do have Spanish language interpretation available and may have some additional language support as well. Will the clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordnances number G6718 and 6722 through 6724, S46852 through 46893, and resolutions 21850 through 21856.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, excuse, yes? Vice Mayor, do you have the first motion on boards and commissions?
Yes, I have a motion to approve Mayor and City Council Boards and Commissions nominations except for Phoenix Business and Workforce Development Board because of a potential conflict for Councilwoman Pastor.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Vice Mayor, do we have a second motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve Boards and Commissions nominations for the Phoenix Business and Workforce Development Board.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and second noting that Councilwoman Pastor will not be participating in this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously noting one abstention. Thank you to the Phoenix community members who have agreed to serve on these important boards. We appreciate your service and it will help us build a stronger city. We will next move to the liquor license portion of our agenda. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items 2 through 10, except item 5, which has been continued to September 2nd, 2020. Item 9, which has been withdrawn by the applicant, and item 10.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio. Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
We next move to item 10, which is VA Market in Councilmember Garcia's district. Councilmember, do you have comments or a motion?
Thank you Mayor, I move to approve item 10.
For our staff, do we have members of the public here to testify?
Mayor, we do not have members of the public. We do have Jennifer Wingenroth, License Program Manager for License Services, and the Police Department who's recommending disapproval.
Thank you, councilmember, would you like a staff presentation?
No, that's okay. Just want to note that I don't think we need to hear from her, but the applicant has been trying to get on and just communicated to our office that she couldn't get on. But I'm okay moving forward.
Mayor, this is the city clerk, I apologize, we do have one person, a member of the public, to speak. Manal, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, we will then, if councilmembers don't have any comments, I will turn to the member of public for the testimony. Alright. Manal, floor is yours.
I apologize Mayor, they are no longer on the line.
And Manal is the applicant.
Yes, councilmember.
Alright, thank you. In this case, based on staff's recommendation, I will be supporting the staff recommendation of a disapproval. Any additional councilmember comments? Roll call.
Mayor and councilmembers, this is Jennifer Wingenroth, the city clerk, and if I may clarify, the councilmember's motion is to forward the liquor license application for item 10 to the state of Arizona with a recommendation that the liquor license be approved. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
DeCecio. Garcia.
May I expand my vote?
Please do.
Yes, so this applicant, we were fortunate enough and our staff did great work to get, be able to get a translator. They, we were able to have a great conversation with them yesterday. She has seven children, has a great business, and I think in this pandemic and in this time, I think we need to focus on making sure that small businesses are successful. And particularly those folks that might be immigrants, refugees, that need support. And so, a couple of things that they want to mention is that I think we need to work as staff to be able to work with communities that have language barriers and might need more attention. So this situations like these don't come about. We were able to have and clear things out yesterday with the applicant. And so with that, I vote yes and wish them all the luck in the world to get through this pandemic and that their business is successful.
Nowakowski.
Yeah.
Pastor. I apologize, Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sorry. Say William, yes.
Yes, thank you. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
No.
Passes 5 to 2.
Thank you, that concludes the liquor license portion of our agenda. We next move to ordinances, resolutions, new business planning, and zoning. City clerk, are we ready?
Yes Mayor, we are.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve items 11 through 91, except the following. Items 15, 16, 20, 37, 50, and 69. Items 21 and 47 have been withdrawn. Items 25 and 44 are as revised. Item 66 is continued to September 2nd, 2020. And item 91 is continued to October 7th, 2020, and excluding these items for public comment. And I don't believe we have any.
Second.
Thank you, any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio. Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes, I have a comment, but I'll wait till after this.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Councilwoman Pastor.
On the previous vote, I fell off the WebEx and that's why I wasn't able to communicate. So, do we bring that back? How do I record my vote?
Okay. Councilwoman Pastor, if you just would like to clarify, we will put it on the record as a technical item. Or a fix, if you would like to clarify what your vote was.
So can I vote? Can we bring it back, or do we bring it back for reconsideration so there's a vote or just a technical issue?
It's just a technical issue, you can let me know now what your vote is.
Oh yes.
Thank you, we will record it.
Thank you. We next move to item 15, which is part of the payment ordinance, a settlement of a claim involving our fire department, Guzman versus City of Phoenix. Any councilmember comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 15.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio. Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 7-1.
We next move to item 16, settlement of a claim, Harper versus City of Phoenix. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 16.
Second.
Any councilmember comments? Roll call.
DeCecio. Garcia.
Mayor, I wanted to, I wanted to give a comment, just didn't catch it in time, so. I want to first apologize to the Ames family for what they've gone through. I recognize the trauma that they suffered and the entire community suffered watching them on television, on YouTube, of what happened to them. I know this settlement is happening today. The money won't take away the trauma or the harm that's been caused. But I hope that the children will have a better life for it. There's other families that have been, that are speaking outside of City Hall today. There's a press conference at 4:00 PM that also deserve justice, or at the very minimum, recognition of the harm that has been done to them. I want to point out that there's been a dehumanizing process in regards to how we at the city, the media and all have talked about the Ames-Harper family. And it's not okay. They've been referred to as the shoplifting incident. Dehumanizing, almost to excuse the actions that were taken by our officers. As far as I know, people are still innocent until proven guilty. And no one, not the officers, not the media, not us, or any of our staff, has the right to judge them or use an allegation as an excuse. I wish this young family the best. I hope these funds can support in counseling and setting up, like I said earlier, a better future and quality of life for the entire family. I also hope that we continue to work as a council to push policy to make sure that other families don't have to go through this. And I want to thank them for their bravery in telling their story and their persistence in seeking justice, and with that I go yes.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
No.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 6-2.
We next move to item 20, payment to PSPRS noting that Councilwoman Williams will not be participating. Do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve item 20.
Any discussion? Roll call.
DeCecio. Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Item 37 is to expand our Small Business Grants Eligibility Program. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 37.
I'll second that.
Oh.
Sorry about that.
No, you Michael, you go.
It shows the enthusiasm this council has for supporting our small businesses. Some of our councilmembers have been working so hard on this program and it really has been a wonderful success story. Our councilmembers have been out promoting this program and knowing that our small businesses are just going to have a hard time making it through, but I hope they realize that the city is trying to be responsive. We have now awarded more than $7.7 million to 1,200 Phoenix small businesses, including restaurants, manufacturers, auto repair shops, event venues, travel agents, you name it. Some cool stories, the joy bus shared with us, that with the city's partnership, they have been able to keep our kitchen open for homebound cancer patients we serve. Some of our amazing restaurants, including Modern Tortilla, wrote, "The money went a long way to keep our employees and our businesses going. This grant has been a blessing for our company, employees, and family." Thank you. And now we're going to be adapting the criteria because our folks in the community have been telling us how to make it a stronger program and changing the eligibility criteria. We had previously said it needed to be businesses that had been operating in Phoenix for more than a year, but now we're going to be supporting our youngest businesses who, thank them for starting and powering through in a tough, tough business climate, but we hope to help them make it. Some cool businesses that will be eligible if this vote passes, including Richard Lopez, a realtor in District 7, Pete's Boss Cuts, a barber, Amy Hezenhut in North Phoenix, who maintains and cleans residential properties. So all kinds of cool companies, who we hope will make it through their own hard work, but that we can provide a little bit of support. So I look forward to supporting this motion. I know councilmembers have been working so hard on this program, so open it up for comments now.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, I want to thank Chris Mackey for taking a look at this and making the suggestions to expand the program. This will really help a lot of businesses in District 3, in particular Love Craft, which is a new restaurant at 32nd Street in Cactus. And the owner used to own 32 Shea, and she really helped transform 32nd Street and Shea. And I hope she does the same at 32nd Street and Cactus. So thank you so much, Chris, for these ideas. I really appreciate it.
Mayor.
Councilwoman.
So I also would like to thank Chris Mackey for all of her work in expanding this. We definitely have businesses in District 5 who are going to benefit from this. In particular, we had, we had a unique family out in Maryvale that has a business and would cook food for different loncheras. And majority of people in the family caught COVID. You know, so they were definitely very affected by the pandemic. Their business was very affected by the pandemic. And by being able to provide, provide this money to them, they're now able to keep afloat. So I'm very excited of all the work that all of us together have been able to pull through. And I'm very excited to see how some of our businesses continue to provide good food for our district and great things for our district. So I am very grateful for everything that we've all done together as a team. Thank you Mayor.
Councilmember Garcia.
Raising my hand with my little pen here. So again, like everyone else, I'm really excited and happy and really want to congratulate Chris and the team. They literally went through numbers and just called businesses to make sure that they could apply for this and get involved. Not a wet blanket, but I do want to say that there is some folks that had trouble getting the grants. We had one business in D8 that wasn't able to qualify. I know we're changing some of the dates, so we're really thankful at the flexibility that Chris and the team have had. But I would just again suggest that we continue to look at some of the barriers that kept some folks from getting this. And as we're expanding, making sure that it reaches all the businesses and is able to deal with those barriers, whether their language or whatever, whatever they may be. So thank you all so much and I'm definitely supporting.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Thank you Mayor. Mayor, I just really want to thank all of our staff, you know, Chris Mackey and her staff, and also my staff. Chris gave us a list of all the small businesses in District 7, and we had our staff call each and every one of them. We have so many restaurants, the downtown Phoenix is just thriving and it's gotten hit with this COVID. And we have over 200 restaurants and bars in downtown that 80% of them are actually locally owned. So those are the ones that we really want to keep them on board, making sure that their businesses keep afloat. And basically out in the Maryvale, South Phoenix, and Levine, Australia areas also, we want to make sure that all those small businesses stay afloat and that we're going to continue to look for ways to help out the community. And I just really want to thank our staff, thank my colleagues also for using the Spanish media. I know we've been on different Spanish medias trying to pump this up and just educating people about the funding that the City of Phoenix has. And it's all about being one team and, you know, the Team Phoenix approach, so thank you so much.
Councilwoman Pastor.
So I appreciate everybody's comments and obviously we know that our small businesses are hurting during this time. Really appreciate Jeremiah from Thunderbird Lounge who kept contacting our office. But it was not only him, it was also some businesses in District 6 that were contacting and saying, "Why, please relook at your qualifications or the purpose of what this money needs to go to and who it needs to go to." So I'm glad it's going to small businesses and that it opens up a broader base and really grateful for all the colleagues in voting for this, so thank you.
Roll call.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
And I see Councilmember Garcia, I didn't hear your vote, if we could clarify?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 7-1.
Thank you. We next move to item 50, which is to authorize an amendment to the Phoenix Business and Workforce Development Board bylaws. Will the city clerk please read the title?
Item 50 is for ordinance G6724, an ordinance amending the bylaws for the Phoenix Business and Workforce Development Board of the City of Phoenix.
Thank you, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 50.
Second.
Motion and a second from, I believe, Councilwoman Stark. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes, and hi Laura.
Yes, hi Michael.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
We next move to item 69, IGA with State Land Department. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 69.
I will second.
Councilwoman Pastor.
I have, I have a comment. As the co-chair of the recent City Council Ad hoc Water Conservation Committee, I understand the importance of water because we're talking about water in this IGA. And I appreciate the hard work of staff and others involved in the IGA and fully support the assignment of the Colorado River Water Allocation from the Arizona State Land Department to serve their land within the city. The Secretary of Interior assigned the Colorado River water to the State Land Department 30 years ago for the purpose of holding that water until it was needed by local cities to serve state land in that jurisdiction in a responsible and sustainable manner. This water will allow for creation of a quality community with significant likelihood of attracting jobs for existing and future residents. Please make sure that the final IGA language protects the interest of existing and future residents by ensuring that language is included, that repeals the zoning and other approvals granted if the water assignment does not happen pursuant to the IGA. So I'd like staff to make sure that that language is in there when they write that IGA.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, yes, the planning director, Alan Stevenson, is here. Water and Deputy City Major Karen Peters, they all are acknowledging that that language will be included.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Roll call.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Thank you. A lot of people worked very hard on that, thank you for your continued work on that. Important item. That is our final agendized item for today. In a moment, turn to our city attorney to introduce public comment. Before I do, I wanted to mark the 19th anniversary, the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, a milestone when some, but not all women, gained the right to vote. City Hall tonight will be yellow and purple, recognizing women's suffrage and the ongoing importance of voting. Thank you to all, and to our Women's Commission and Arts Commission who helped us with this important milestone and recognizing it in a appropriate way for the times. With that, I will turn to our city attorney to introduce public comment.
Thank you Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits councilmembers from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you, we will begin our public comments with Jeremy Thacker, followed by Kellen Wilson.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to comment today. Since the rules don't allow for a two-way conversation here, I just want to ask a quick favor, that I'm going to pose a couple of questions to you and I'd just like for you to... and I'd just like for you to jot down the answers, uh, so we can compare them to the actual answers. So, uh, here we go. It's not a test, no, uh, no SAT quiz, so. Parks maintains 4,700 acres of developed land. What percentage of that land is occupied by the city-owned municipal golf courses? That's question one. Question two, how many citizens use the city's municipal courses for fiscal year 18 and 19? Last year, this is question three, sorry. Last year, total water usage for parks was just shy of 3 billion gallons of water. What percentage was used by the municipal golf courses? Question four, last question. According to park staff, parks paid over $10 million for water in fiscal year 18, 19. Of that amount, how much was paid by the city's municipal golf courses? So, we'll go over the answers real quickly. Number one. The percentage used of parks land, parks developed land by golf courses is 20%, 944 acres. In comparison, dog parks use 0.4%, skate parks 0.1%, and pickleball 0.1%. Question two, how many citizens use the golf courses for fiscal year 18, 19? 30,000 or less, which is a far cry from the 300,000 participants reported to city council and local newspapers by staff. Total water usage for parks, 3 billion gallons. Of that, how much was used by golf courses? The answer is 1.175 billion. 42% of parks' total water usage was used by the city's golf courses. Bonus question, uh, how many gallons were affluent or wastewater? Zero. According to park staff, the water bill was $10 million for, uh, last year. How much was paid by the city's municipal golf courses? $64,000, less than 1% of the total parks' water bill, while using 42% of the total water. How's that possible? Well, that's what I wanted to know when on June 16th, I made a PRR request for the city-owned golf course water bills and usage for that year. My request was denied, and I was told repeatedly by park staff that no documentation existed. I was told that the city's water service department could not provide customer information due to privacy regulations. After more than 45 days of being told nothing existed, I contacted the Arizona Department of Water Resources and was immediately supplied with an annual reports, uh, submitted by the city's water service department, containing exact usage broken down by type for all individual parks and golf courses. 12 days ago, I requested to come on site to inspect the financials.
Uh, thank you so much for your testimony. Kellen Wilson will be followed by Vincent Ambrosino.
Hi, thank you. Um, uh, my name is Kellen and I'm a former hospitality worker and organizer with Unite Here Local 11. I just wanted to give the council an update. Um, we had been meeting, um, and calling in on every council meeting over the summer before the break. And now that everyone is back, we wanted to give you an update on where the hospitality industry stands. Um, you may remember, um, giving rent relief to the airport companies through the end of this year, a vote that you had passed months ago. And since then, those companies have sent warn letters laying off hundreds and hundreds of employees. They've also systematically cut health insurance for those same employees, um, who were waiting to be returned to work. So as those companies, HMS Host, SSP America, and others received taxpayer-funded bailouts by the city of Phoenix, um, they took that money and ran, leaving all of, um, the airport employees who keep, keep it the friendliest airport, um, hanging out to dry. So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew what was happening, um, as you pass these relief efforts, that what the corporations are doing when they receive those bailouts is, um, pocketing it and laying off hundreds and hundreds of our community members. Uh, and just to remind you that, um, these are employees that will continue to call into all of these meetings to wait to see what the company can, um, or what the city can do for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vincent will be followed by Barbara Heller.
Hello, my name is Vincent Ambrosino, and I've worked for the Phoenix Convention Center for three years. I am here in solidarity and support of HMS Host Airport workers who have just found out that many of them are going to be fired from their company. City councils should pass the ordinance protecting us all. No one should lose their jobs during a pandemic, especially from a company that got bailed out by the city. We need you to do better. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Uh, Barbara Heller is our next speaker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Thank you. After hours of reading the NPF's analysis of 2018 use of deadly force of Phoenix PD, I have to wonder if you were surprised at the increase in the violent crimes or the increase in assaults on officers using a firearm. It also seems you passed right over the NPF's findings that no evidence that Phoenix PD policies or training is flawed or misguided. In fact, they found PPD's executive staff have taken many reasonable steps to strengthen policy and training. They did recommend a staffing study, which we all know will show we do not have a sufficient amount of officers to respond to calls for service, proactive policing units, or adequate backup. But that's old news. The community has been screaming about this shortage for years, making for understaffed, underpaid, and overworked police department. Mistrust is a two-way street with both some people and our cops fighting for their very lives. It is time for the community to step up and teach each other and our children to be responsible for their actions, communicate, respect, trust, and just comply. We have to help Phoenix PD to better our lives. Phoenix PD cannot continue to be the society's garbage collector. We have to step up and stop the violence. When we are talking about people's lives, the politics must stop. Thank you, Phoenix PD. I know you go above and beyond every single day, and I support you 200%. It shows. In 2819, there was 841,500 calls for service, 15 after Sir Involved shootings, lowest in 10 years. Appears to me something is working. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Hornstein is our next speaker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, so I've worked for SSP America for almost six years, and I've been furloughed since March. The last time we were here, a majority of you generously voted to give airport companies like mine millions of dollars in rent relief, claiming that I wouldn't have a job to go back to if you didn't give them this assistance. So here we are, it's the end of August, and you gave them the money, and I still don't have a job to go back to. I lost my home, and due to lack of employer contribution, my coworkers and I all lost our health insurance. Um, something I'd like to add is that we could have held our insurance for a little longer had our company released our PTO hours, but they refused to allow any of us to use them. They held our money hostage, and that was money that could have kept workers and our families safe and healthy for a little longer. Um, I have an incredible doctor that helped improve my quality of life exponentially since falling ill with chronic digestive issues. Um, not only do I lose my health insurance, but I lose him too because his office cannot accept access, and it's like over a hundred dollars to see him if I were to try to pay out of pocket. I've also received a warn letter terminating my employment at the end of September along with hundreds of coworkers. You bailed out these companies and they passed nothing on to their supposedly valuable employees. Those of us who had given years of our lives to them, and they can't even be bothered to communicate with us or pay for our healthcare during a pandemic, and as a result, now we all have to go to the state and city to foot our bills. SSP got exactly what they wanted by appealing to your soft spots. They sent business owners of color, female business owners, small mom and pop business owners from airport restaurants and coffee shops to do their bidding. They used these people to get what they wanted from this council, which was a whole lot of taxpayer money. And you council members left those of us who generate billions of dollars a year for your city out to dry. Big corporations are still making money while all of us are literally losing the roofs over our, our heads. We will continue to come back to these meetings every week until you found a way to help us out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final two speakers will be first Julius Walters, followed by our final speaker, Laura Perez.
Yes, hello. My name is Julius Walters, and, uh, I am a cook over at the Renaissance Hotel. As a hospitality worker, I just wanted to share with you really what it's, uh, been like for me and what has, excuse me, and really, really what has been important for me. Uh, a- a- as these, uh, really strange days starts to progress, um. Additional sick days, really, uh, would really be appreciative. And as, as the, I'm sorry, as the time really starts to continue, um, through these, uh, COVID, uh, I'm sorry. It's just been a very, very hard time, uh, these past few months. Uh, everyone is really calm, bombarded by fear. And I just wanted to let, let you know that, uh, uh, protection at the workplace would really, really help, uh, not just me physically, but also my mental health, uh, and everyone's mental health. And and, yeah, I'm sorry, that, uh, that's all we really wish to speak about. Thank you.
Thank you for being willing to share your story. Laura will be our final speaker.
Five months, and I just wanted to share a little bit about what's going on with me personally in the past couple of weeks since the city council last met. I have not, well, actually I got a call yesterday, but beyond that, I haven't heard about when any of us would be able to return to work. And it's been very frustrating to just have to continue with no end in sight. I'm starting to hear from coworkers, um, who know people at our hotels who've started to lose their jobs. Um, even though the last time we met, many of the companies and the representatives on the line had, had shared like their, they have no intention of firing people, and yet I know very, several people who've already lost their positions. I also want to say that there are three other people, I believe, um, waiting to speak. Um, I think they hopped on a little late. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for our city clerk, do we have any additional speakers?
Mayor, we do not at this time.
Thank you.
I apologize, Mayor. I am, I'm being told that we do have Maria Valdez on the line.
All right, Maria, the floor is yours.
My name is Maria Valdez, and I work in the hotel industry for more than 18 years. I quit work in March, and for the last five or six months, we haven't received any information about if we're going to return to work or if we're going to leave.
Maria.
Only just a few days.
Maria, can you pause it so that the translator translates, please?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. We will have the translator assist with translation.
Okay, my name is Maria. I work in the hotel industry for more than 10 years.
Mayor, I will translate for now. It seems like we're having issues with the translator. Uh, my name is Maria, and I am in the hotel industry. Call Maria, please continue.
Okay.
Go ahead, I can hear you.
Yeah. Okay, I work in the hotel industry for more than 10 years. Um, now in March, I left work.
I've been working in the whole hotel industry since, for 10 years now, and we've just stopped working.
In March, and for the last five months.
Six months ago.
And for the last five months, we haven't received any information.
From six months ago in regards to our workplace.
And only just three days, I started to leave employees.
Three days ago, they started to fire employees? Go ahead.
I've received many phone calls from my coworkers, and it's very sad how a lot of people are losing their jobs. Our, um, I think we all have the same feeling of sadness where we don't know when we're going to lose our jobs.
I believe that we all feel the same sadness because we don't know when we're going to lose our jobs.
And the people, um, like the council officials who supposedly should be helping us, I feel that they're not. They're not doing anything to support us.
They always ask us to.
We're waiting, we have to wait, but I believe that our sadness.
For us to wait, that we need to wait, but I believe that our sadness.
Can bring us a lot of psychological trauma because we're waiting, but we don't know what we're waiting for. I just want to ask you to help us, uh, talk to the company so they will be more responsible towards their employees.
Especially with these employees that have been with them for so many years, some for 20, some for 25. Many of these people have left their, have given their lives to their jobs, and it's very sad that they're now being let go.
I just want to ask you to act, do us a favor, for the people who need your help the most. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Uh, Ruth Holt will be followed by Victor Coria. Ruth, are you with us?
Hey, I'm sorry, is that you, Ruth? Can you speak?
Yes.
Excuse me, I didn't know you were a interpreter, so I'm sorry. Yes, you can speak. Yes, um, yes, my name is Ruth Holt, and I work for Marriott Renaissance.
My name is Ruth Holt. I work for, um, the hotel, uh, Marriott Renaissance, I said?
Ruth, are you with us?
Hey, I'm sorry, is that you, Ruth? Can you speak?
Yes.
Excuse me, I didn't know you were a interpreter, so I'm sorry. Yes, you can speak. Yes, um, yes, my name is Ruth Holt, and I work for Marriott Renaissance.
My name is Ruth Holt. I work for, um, the hotel, uh, Marriott Renaissance, I said?
Yes, and my husband works for Marriott, he had eight years working there, and he doesn't work anymore. Y mi esposo también trabaja para la compañía Marriott, tiene, tenía ocho años trabajando ahí, ahorita ya no trabaja, también fue despedido.
My husband also works for Marriott, and he's been, was there eight years, and he was also, um, fired.
So, mi única preocupación es que, uh, la mayoría de los trabajadores hemos dado y seguimos dando todo de nuestra parte, y estoy preocupada por toda la gente que está quedando sin trabajo. Obvio, yo también estoy preocupada por el mío, por perder mi, mi empleo.
I'm very worried, I'm very concerned about all these people that have lost their jobs, that had given their all to these companies. I'm very worried about myself. I could lose my job too.
Es lo que me preocupa ahorita, es que están quitando las posiciones, ellos están cubriendo las espaldas, diciendo que estas posiciones ya no van a ser necesarias, eh, porque ya no las van a necesitar, y es la manera de cómo están corriendo la gente. So, yo realmente estoy...
What they're doing right now is they're covering their own backs. They're saying that they're eliminating the certain position, and that's how they're able to fire people, but they're just covering their own backs.
Uh, y este, estoy hablando por todos mis compañeros de trabajo, también el, en el departamento donde trabajaba. Mi esposo está hablando por mis compañeros, antiguos compañeros. Ellos están perdiendo sus trabajos todos.
I'm, I'm speaking for my coworkers, for my husband's coworkers, all the people that have lost their jobs.
Otra de las cosas que ellos están haciendo es, uh, cortando las posiciones, pero están poniendo el trabajo. Que estaban haciendo otras personas, o sea, les están dando doble o triple trabajo, y eso no es justo tampoco.
What they're also doing is they're eliminating positions, and they're adding workloads to other people that had other positions. They're adding double, uh, workloads or more, and that's not right or fair.
Sí, eh, la situación es de que la gente tiene que, um, soportar este tipo de trato porque no les queda de otra, porque están, necesitan dinero para sus rentas, para sus pagos, para comida. Esto es injusto.
People have to put up with this. They need money to pay for their rent, their food, their utilities. That's not fair.
Y otro de puntos que nada más que hay que tomar, sé que tengo el tiempo medido, es el punto de que la gente está yendo a trabajar, y muchos de mis compañeras, ex-compañeras de mi otro departamento están siendo infectadas porque no están teniendo las medidas de seguridad.
Another point is, I know I have limited time, but, uh, the coworkers that are working, they're being exposed. They're not being careful with, um, sanitation and, um, disinfection, and they're being exposed to infections.
So, ellos se enferman, ¿verdad?, dentro del trabajo sirviendo a sus empleadores, dándole el mejor servicio a las personas que vienen.
They become ill serving their employers, helping their employers serve the people that they serve, and they become sick.
So, ellos se enferman, y ellos no están recibiendo el pago adecuado. Si ellos enferman en su trabajo, ellos no tienen un respaldo de que la compañía los va a respaldar, diciendo que les va a pagar el tiempo que duren enfermos.
They're being infected, they're becoming ill. The company is not, uh, being responsible, not paying them for the time that they become ill.
So, ese es mi mayor concern, the, los trabajos no los están quitando, no tienen sanitización, uh, adecuada, y están siendo, eh, infectados en los trabajos.
That's my main concern, that they're not being, uh, protected, they're being exposed to unsanitary conditions, and after they, they become ill, the companies are not taking care of them or providing them with any help or, uh, payment after they become ill, working for them.
Una de las cosas que desearíamos que nos escuchen en sus corazones es que, por favor, ayuden a los trabajadores que hemos servido, los que han servido por veinte, veinticinco años. Todos merecemos una oportunidad de estar seguros, y apoyo de nuestros trabajadores, y apoyo de la compañía. Entonces, eh, era ese mi punto, nada más para dar mi punto de vista, y espero que lo tomen en cuenta, y gracias por el tiempo que nos dieron para hablar.
I hope to touch your heart. I hope you to take, I want you to take into consideration these people that have been working there for twenty, twenty-five years. All they're asking is for a job and security. Um, thank you so much for listening to me and giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, uh, for your testimony. Victor will be followed by Tracy Gunderson, our final speaker.
Um, hi, uh, good afternoon. My name is Victor Coria. I work for HMS Host. I've been working for this company, which is based at the airport, at the Phoenix Sky Harbor, for nine years. Uh, I have been for law since, uh, March, uh, when the pandemic hit, and so, uh, we get for law, followed by the, I lost my health insurance in, uh, Ju- in June, uh, fifth, you know? And now I, I just received a letter of, uh, which is called a warm letter, saying that by October fifteen, uh, we are going to basically get, uh, permanently laid off. Um, my main course, uh, my main concern is that HMS Host has been receiving, I mean, you, the city council, um, bought to give financial or rent relief to the corporations, uh, based in the Phoenix Sky Harbor. And, um, and now, uh, Sky, uh, Phoenix Sky Harbor decide, I mean, Phoenix Sky Harbor, I'm sorry. HMS Host decided to, um, basically, uh, lay us off. But, I mean, taking this date, which is October fifteen, which we, uh, realistically, we know that the travel industry is not going to get any better, you know? Um, now I'm becoming, uh, basically a little unconcerned because I'm becoming a burden with, uh, using unemployment, using access, because I have a, uh, chronic, uh, condition. Um, and I'm afraid that I'm not going to get my job back based in this, um, deadline that they impose on us, you know? Um, so I'm just appealing for your help, because it's not only me, it's hundreds of other employees that we're probably going to lose our job. Um, if it's anything that you can, guys can do for us, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy is our final speaker for today's council meeting.
Uh, hi, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Tracy Gunderson. I've worked at Host for nine and a half years as a server. Um, you voted to give airport companies like HMS Host rent relief because you thought if they didn't receive anything, all right, and my coworkers wouldn't have a job to come back to. However, you gave the money, and I still don't have a job to come back, to, come back to. I've now received a warning letter that I will be laid off come this October. Come to find out now Host is using apps in their restaurants to replace servers and bartenders. I lost my health insurance on June fourth. I'm a leukemia survivor, and I've struggled to get the coverage that I need. We, we will continue to come back to these meetings until the city decides to stand up for our interests. And, and, um, like I've said before, we are the heartbeat of the airport, of, um, we're the first people that, uh, the travelers come to see and to greet with a smiling face and, uh, to put our lights on the line, which, um, we're willing to do because we love our jobs, we love our company. However, um, we need help desperately. I'm a mother of two young boys. My, my husband is, um, self-employed, and, and I would hope that you stand up for the interests of, of us little people, and not just the interest of these multi-billion dollar corporations like Host. Thank you so much, and have a blessed rest of your day.
Thank you for your testimony. We are adjourned.